The question may be more to the certainty of the Western Terminal, which I believe is committed as part of the O'Hare Expansion Plan. So that, if that opens, when that opens, a lot of the market forces are unleashed. If we coordinate the infrastructure, if IDOT and the federal government can get that all done, that will maximize the benefits from that action. But the airport expansion itself is proceeding with a different funding source. And I think that's, I'm not an expert on the funding of it, but I think that's pretty locked in.
Can I? I would add real quick, too, is that for years, I think your city, Bensaville, Algrove, Bataska, have been experiencing how bad traffic has gotten on York and Thorndale and some of the other roads. And what we were hearing from our own engineers and in formal discussions with the state and the regional transportation experts was that we've got to deal with the roadway issues anyway, even if the Western Terminal wasn't coming. Well, it's coming, and the idea is let's make the final link, you know, of the expressway that's missing. Let's fix up York Road. Let's get these intersections and interchanges fixed right. So a lot of discussion was, let's look at the roads as needing to fix the roads. And then also, the airport is icing on the cake when that Western Terminal comes. So is the $3.8 billion identified? No. Will it come? We strongly believe that. Not while we're sitting, because we're sitting in front of you, but when you look at all the projects in this state that have a huge impact. Did you see that study area they picked up in that video? This is one of the biggest ones probably in the Midwest. And so we think, and it's all incremental. They're not going to get the $3.8 billion. They're going to then go to the next phase of engineering and the next leg. And they actually could build Elgin-O'Hare without bringing the 294 bypass around if that came down to splitting funds. I think, as Alderman-Police said, you have a standalone development that you're setting the stage for. We're not saying stick something out in the middle of a greenfield and hope they will come. You've got a good area, a good business area, and the higher and better use is what you've shown in the plan.
Alderman-Shock, he's been patiently waiting, so I'm going to let him go, and then we'll follow up back on these comments in a little bit.
What I was trying to get across the first time I talked is to do one each of these in sequence, first, the first one and then the second one. But when I figured out how many months it was, it's only 15 months, and here we're talking eight months. So it's about half the time that I was thinking about. So I'll go along with this as long as I know that at the end of eight months, we don't have another big plan come in front of us for this area that's going to cost another $150,000 or $200,000. That's the important thing. It's just so we have something going. And, you know, I love it and I want it, but I want to do it reasonably, so don't hit us with another one after this. That's all.
At the end of this process, this piece, we should be at implementation, and that's something the city does. There are services that you can decide that you want to hire from outside. We may be among the people that you might want to consider to do some of those services. But this will get us to implementation. You'll be doing, looking to do engineering, be looking to figure out how to get the developers engaged in a way that we can assemble the street sites and get the land for the streets and so on and so forth. So that's where we'll be at the end of this. I don't want you to go partly, you know, of course, my self-interest, but I don't want you to think that there may not be something that we hopefully could be helpful with, but it will be of an implementation nature at that point, and it's all your decision. We're going to get you to that point with this action.
Mayor Johnson?
Just for information, the current funding for this project is $155 million. That was passed in the Safety Lou Bill. That's the same bill that gave us the $11.4 million for our grade separation. The next federal funding bill is about 18 months away before it looks like that's going to get passed. The bill that is before the Illinois Legislature is House Joint Resolution 30. That passed the House almost unanimously. It got stuck in Assignment Committee in the Senate. It's recently been moved out of Assignment Committee in this veto session. It's now in the Transportation Committee. Mayors and managers last night passed a resolution urging the support. It's anticipated that hopefully that'll be taken up in veto section, session next week, in which case then, at that point, the legislature will have approved that it'd be taken over by the tollway, the thought being, that's the quickest way to get it built because they have the bonding authority to get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman-Roy Wesley? No? Okay. And then Alderman-Police, I think hopefully we're done.
Basically, I just want to say, you know, we're already, we started the train station downtown, you know. I think Alderman-Roy Wesley's comparing us to the previous councils. I think this coun-
Oh.
I think this council is doing more work. People tell me all the time, he goes, "Well, you guys got roads, you're repairing roads all over town. You guys seem to be doing more work than ever before. Services are fine." I think we're moving in the right direction. I think we should keep going in the right direction.
Okay. So the motion on the floor with a second is to direct staff to enter a contract with Lakota Group for Phase Four, the implementation phase. If there's nothing else in the question?
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Friedman and I talked about this earlier tonight. I think the motion would be to direct the staff to enter into contracts with Lakota Group. And Friedman, from an accounting, from a bookkeeping point of view, it makes more sense to have one contract with Lakota for their share and one contract with Friedman Company for their share, just to keep track of how the money's going. Won't have any effect on the bottom line, but I just want to let you know that I think it's easier for them and easier for us if we have two separate contracts.
Okay. Alderman-Coles is the motioner. Do you accept that amendment? And as the seconder, I do. I think the last question here, Alderman, Eugene Wesley?
The only thing I also want to state in that motion that two people are assigned to this project that's ongoing with a cohort, and so I'd like to see who wants to step up to the plate and take part in those discussions with staff.
Mayor Johnson, is that appropriate to add in here?
No, I would say that's not appropriate, but if that's the intent, I'll be glad to seek volunteers to serve in that capacity.
Okay, so it won't be in the motion, but the man has spoken. Okay.
My vote may be no now.
Talk to the attorney. All right, I'd like to take a roll call on this, please.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman-Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman-Police?
Yes.
Alderman-Coles?
Yes.
Alderman-Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman-Luittin?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work on this so far. The last item here to discuss on the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee is a report and recommendation for payment request number three to FBG Corporation for the Metro Chain Station reconstruction in the amount of $255,352.79. Mr. Forrest, would you please walk us through this bill?
Briefly. Yes, briefly. All right. There is actually one item on this payout request, and I spoke to the general contractor about it. That's the drywall line item on here. And although the station is, they're ready to start drywalling, they're just finishing a couple of interior things that have to be hidden in the wall cavities before they can go forward with the drywall. I brought up that we were going to be looking at this tonight. He anticipated, due to the past history with the first couple of payouts, with the meetings that were canceled through the summer, with the meetings that we missed when you are with IML, that it would take longer to get this pay request approved. He thought the drywalling would be completed. He said if the council so wants that removed from this pay request, he would do that. I feel comfortable that they will go forward drywalling the building shortly. The masonry work is just about completed. Anticipate the drive-it on the clock tower area. Those drive-it contracts are supposed to be working tomorrow and Monday. That'll be dependent on the weather, of course. And, I mean, the project's, at this point, is very close to schedule. We're still anticipating Christmas for it to be ready. That's all I have to say.
John, if we were to approve this tonight with the drywall in there, would you have a much, much better feeling by next Thursday night of the future install schedule of that drywall, if it hasn't already begun by then? So we still have till next council's meeting to pull X number of dollars out of this.
Yes.
Sound right to you?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to pay this as per staff recommendation, $255,352.79. Is that a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings, the Land Vision Unified Development Ordinance. And if there's anything anybody else would like to add, want to go on record right now? Alderman-Shocky?
Just a question. We can't get the city lights over there, right? They have to put their own Metro-type lights over there.
Correct. Metro will be providing new platform lights. They're going to be putting in 15 light fixtures on the inbound and outbound platforms at the station. The lights that are on the station itself, those are part of the project. Are you talking about installing the Prairie-style lights anywhere on the station property?
If I understand, we can't. Metro won't allow the Prairie-style.
Correct.
Is it, would it be possible just to put up a couple on the wall, at least, so it blends in with the Prairie-style?
There's been some discussion in the last week about the lighting levels around the station. Again, the architect, the light fixtures that he has chosen for the station are aesthetically with the design of the station. At this point, it's been sort of decided, let's get the station finished, get the new light poles that Metro's going to put in, and then see where we're at with the lighting levels. If we need to add any additional fixtures on the building at that time, one of the, there will be some allowances, as you're aware. There'll be another change order coming in for some additional outlets on the exterior of the building that will allow us to decorate it at Christmas time and so forth. So there will be some electrical in place on the outside of the building if we need to wire into that for some lights.
Okay, Alderman-Luittin?
I would like to say that a couple of weeks ago, I made an out-of-order complaint about the post office having the handicap misstriped. I would like to say they must have been watching our television broadcast because last week they restriped it correctly.
That's good news. I'm glad they were watching. Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries.
Can we have a break?
Yeah. She probably.
Oh, man. Oh, here goes the key.
Just a break. You guys haven't yet.
All within, all within.
I negated. All right. I negated. This is just a lot of bullshit. We, I shouldn't have said that.
Yeah.
All right. I negated. This is just a lot of bullshit. We, I shouldn't have said that.
Pack it, so that could address that question?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, report and recommendation, business license fee schedule policies. Mr. Wilson?
As with the same rationale behind the vehicle license, hard 60-day before period, the same with this one. Business licenses are effective January 1st, so this would mean that the 60 days before that is November 1st. So looking for a November 1st period on that. Point two is that they fill out both the renewal and the license application. This is extremely important for the police department, in particular with the keyholder information, so that they have updated keyholders, so if they need to get a hold of somebody in the middle of the night. There's also a section in there about materials, hazardous materials, which is important for the police department and the fire department, should there be a call there, so they know if they have to get hazmat involved, or if they know if something, you know, could potentially be going up on them or not. In the past, we've had some people that have been lax on that, and we didn't have any teeth to hold them to it. So we want to add that to the code, just to put some teeth into it. And then we want to add that all business owners come in for a business license within 30 days of getting occupancy to be in business, which is the same timeline that we have for the vehicle stickers, for which they have to come in to get theirs. So we're just, again, being consistent with that, trying to be, you know, consistent across the board with all of our different licensing policies.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Sorry, again, we would, yeah, we would need a motion to-
Do you want all three of these items put into the motion, as they are written here?
Correct. Yeah. We'll have the attorneys draft the appropriate ordinances to fit them in the code wherever they need to be.
Okay. I'll make the motion, basically to adopt new business license code revision. Can I just say per one, two, and three of this memorandum, date October 15th, and the attorney will draw up the legal verbiage?
I'll second it.
Is that allowed, Mayor?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have one question. On this procedure, if they do not come in and renew the business license or pay it, you know, is this policy going to fall in that they get shut down or not? I don't see that in this.
Is there a fine?
There's a fine.
Yeah.
There is a fine, but what if they don't come in and pay the fine? How many days does it take if a business does not pay a business license? And I know there's one in town right now that hasn't paid it. When do they lock the doors on these businesses?
They don't.
You know, I'd have to check. I know the fee structure does go up, and I believe it's after, I would say the 45th or 60-day is the highest late penalty. I would have to check with code enforcement to see what their procedure is on that. I see the mayor might have a comment on that. He's kind of shaking his head, so.
Well, there is a procedure called due process. Sorry.
Mayor, no phones.
So you do not have the right just to go in and shut down a business without going through legal process?
Yeah, correct. There are assist penalties. They are sent letters. We do go out and inform them that they are in violation of the code and things of that nature. So we don't just go out one day and-
Okay.
And put a padlock on them.
All right, then, let's back up here, then. When do we start the due process to shut down a business if they didn't pay the business license? Shouldn't that be in this policy, Mayor?
That'd be by direction of the City Council to institute litigation.
Well, then-
Be done on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Well, then, in future items, I would like that be put on the agenda, though.
Okay. We can take a look. A lot of that stuff's already in the code. This is just stuff we're tightening up. So the late penalties and the due process, that's already in the code. This is just-
All right, I will-
In addition to. If it's not there, we can-
That's fine.
Brad, can we get some, like, information only in next week or the week after? Pack it, so that could address that question?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, report and recommendation, business license fee schedule policies. Mr. Wilson?
As with the same rationale behind the vehicle license, hard 60-day before period, the same with this one. Business licenses are effective January 1st, so this would mean that the 60 days before that is November 1st. So looking for a November 1st period on that. Point two is that they fill out both the renewal and the license application. This is extremely important for the police department, in particular with the keyholder information, so that they have updated keyholders, so if they need to get a hold of somebody in the middle of the night. There's also a section in there about materials, hazardous materials, which is important for the police department and the fire department, should there be a call there, so they know if they have to get hazmat involved, or if they know if something, you know, could potentially be going up on them or not. In the past, we've had some people that have been lax on that, and we didn't have any teeth to hold them to it. So we want to add that to the code, just to put some teeth into it. And then we want to add that all business owners come in for a business license within 30 days of getting occupancy to be in business, which is the same timeline that we have for the vehicle stickers, for which they have to come in to get theirs. So we're just, again, being consistent with that, trying to be, you know, consistent across the board with all of our different licensing policies.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Sorry, again, we would, yeah, we would need a motion to-
Do you want all three of these items put into the motion, as they are written here?
Correct. Yeah. We'll have the attorneys draft the appropriate ordinances to fit them in the code wherever they need to be.
Okay. I'll make the motion, basically to adopt new business license code revision. Can I just say per one, two, and three of this memorandum, date October 15th, and the attorney will draw up the legal verbiage?
I'll second it.
Is that allowed, Mayor?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have one question. On this procedure, if they do not come in and renew the business license or pay it, you know, is this policy going to fall in that they get shut down or not? I don't see that in this.
Is there a fine?
There's a fine.
Yeah.
There is a fine, but what if they don't come in and pay the fine? How many days does it take if a business does not pay a business license? And I know there's one in town right now that hasn't paid it. When do they lock the doors on these businesses?
They don't.
You know, I'd have to check. I know the fee structure does go up, and I believe it's after, I would say the 45th or 60-day is the highest late penalty. I would have to check with code enforcement to see what their procedure is on that. I see the mayor might have a comment on that. He's kind of shaking his head, so.
Well, there is a procedure called due process. Sorry.
Mayor, no phones.
So you do not have the right just to go in and shut down a business without going through legal process?
Yeah, correct. There are assist penalties. They are sent letters. We do go out and inform them that they are in violation of the code and things of that nature. So we don't just go out one day and-
Okay.
And put a padlock on them.
All right, then, let's back up here, then. When do we start the due process to shut down a business if they didn't pay the business license? Shouldn't that be in this policy, Mayor?
That'd be by direction of the City Council to institute litigation.
Well, then-
Be done on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Well, then, in future items, I would like that be put on the agenda, though.
Okay. We can take a look. A lot of that stuff's already in the code. This is just stuff we're tightening up. So the late penalties and the due process, that's already in the code. This is just-
All right, I will-
In addition to. If it's not there, we can-
That's fine.
We can make it though.
Brad, can we get some, like, information only in next week or the week after? Pack it, so that could address that question?
Absolutely.
Okay.